Before we begin, I do need to read a notice regarding our special Notice regarding the Special Planning Commission meeting. This meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means consistent with State of California Executive Order N dash twenty-nine dash twenty dated March seventeenth, twenty twenty. By order of the Health Officer of San Mateo County directing all individuals living in the county to shelter at their place of residence. The governor has allowed local legislative bodies to hold public meetings via teleconference and to make public meetings accessible telephonically or otherwise electronically to all members of the public seeking to observe and to address the local legislative body or state body to avoid public gatherings and has suspended all contrary provisions of the Brown Act. This meeting will be via video conference only and can be watched in real time on the Millbury Community Television Cable Channel Twenty-seven or on www.mctv.tv. The public cannot come to the Millbury Council Chamber to join this meeting as this is a remote meeting with no public location. To maximize time for public comment, members of the public are encouraged to provide comments by joining the Planning Commission meeting via Zoom or web visit https://zoom.us/select/joinamitting and enter meeting ID eight one two one two eight five one six zero six. Use the raise hand feature to request to speak. For dialing comments, call one six six nine nine zero zero six eight three three and enter meeting ID eight one two one two eight five one six zero six to speak. All public comments are subject to a three-minute time limit unless otherwise deemed determined by the planning chair. And so with that, we'll go ahead and call to order the meeting and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Can we have the flag?
Yep.
And we'll go ahead and start. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So may we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Don Agro.
President.
Commissioner Wong.
President.
Commissioner Quigg.
President.
Vice Chair Davis.
Here.
And Chair Joe.
President.
Thank you.
And thank you. So we'll go ahead and start with the agenda review. So are there any items that any of the planning commissioners think we need to review or staff?
Yeah, through the chair, if you don't mind, before we begin with the agenda review, I would like to introduce our newest staff member in the planning department. Mr. Christian Santana is our newest planner. He is hired as assistant planner to fill the vacancy vacated by Link Robertson. He comes to us from Southern California. He previously interned at the city of Paramount and then also received his undergraduate degree from Florida in political science and masters in urban and regional planning from UC Irvine. So we're really excited to have him here and he is a quick study, so we'll he'll be the main contact with the public. He'll be staffing the phones and answering emails. And we're really excited. So Christian Santana, you want to say a few words?
Thanks, Roscoe, for that introduction. Yeah, well, thank you guys for having me. I'm just really excited to get work, get started.
Well, thank you and welcome. We're excited to have you on board with us. We have a lot of stuff going on in our city, so glad to have the more the merrier. And hope to be able to meet you in person sometime soon. Yes, so we'll go ahead with the, again, with the agenda review. So are there any items here for the agenda that we need to consider? Okay, seems like seeing none. We'll go ahead to approval of the minutes. So this is the regular meeting minutes of July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. So do we have any comments or motions?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any comments before we?
Let's go over it. I reviewed it. Have no comments.
Okay, so let's call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Don Agro.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Wong.
Approve.
Commissioner Quigg. Commissioner Quigg.
She's muted, but she said yes.
Yes. Vice Chair Davis.
Yes.
Yes. And Chair Joe.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes five zero.
Okay. Item number three is for public communication. So this is reserved for persons wishing to comment on any item that is under the purview of the Planning Commission but not on our agenda. So do we have any speakers for this evening?
We do have some attendees. We do have some attendees, but no hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go ahead and move on to public hearing. So item four A is nine eighty Crestview Drive. This is a public hearing on a design review permit application to allow a first-story renovation and addition and the construction of a new second story to an existing single-story residence in the single-family residential R one zoning district. May we have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair Joe. And let me just get the share screen going here. Just give me one second. Can you guys confirm that you're seeing it full screen and not just the kind of cutoff version? Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. So good evening, planning commissioners. I'm Nestor Guevara, Associate Planner here at City of Millbury. The item before you tonight is a design review permit at nine eighty Crestview. The applicant is requesting a design review permit to allow first-story renovation and addition and the addition of a new second story to an existing house, a single-family, single-story house in the R one zone. This map here just shows the location of the subject site. It's this red dot here in the Glendale Highlands neighborhood close to Highway two eighty. A little bit of background information. The subject site is located in the R one zone, the single-family residential zone. It's an interior lot that measures just under nine thousand square feet. And the existing single-story house measures two thousand one hundred and seventy-nine square feet. The proposal is to renovate and add to that first, to the existing first story and then construct a new second story for a total of just under thirty-five hundred square feet. And the photograph here just shows the existing house as it stands, the single-story house. This here is the existing site plan of the single-story house. It meets all the setbacks for both the fronts, the rear, and then both sides. It actually exceeds the side setbacks on the one side. It's, I believe, five, five feet and three inches and then on the right side it exceeds it a little bit more at thirteen feet and two inches. All trees that use the existing along the rear and elsewhere on the property are to remain as well. This here is the proposed site plan. You'll see the outline of that new second story addition here. And then we do have some addition space in the first story. All setbacks are still met, both in the second, both in the first story and then in the new second story, they do meet the upper story setbacks. Just as is the case in the first story setbacks, they actually exceed them in the second story as well. Where on the left side, they have a second-story setback of fourteen feet, eleven inches or, yes, fourteen feet, eleven inches. And then on the right side, they have setback of seven feet and ten inches from the first story. You'll also notice that they have some new synthetic grass there in the front, front yard landscaping, and that's to meet our our zoning codes, front yard landscaping requirement. Moving along then to the floor plan. This is the floor plan for the existing single-story house. It contains three bedrooms, two bathrooms, a family room, a living room, and a kitchen. And then a sunroom that that's to be, to be removed and the existing two-car garage. This here is the renovated first-story floor plan. It contains the primary, primary bedroom and bathroom. Another separate bathroom, a family room, a dining room, a living room, a kitchen, a mudroom, and then a new entry where it's part of the addition and then the two-car garage is to remain as that's fixed. And then here is the second story floor plan. It contains the three bedrooms and then two bathrooms. And it does also contain a walking closet for the primary, primary suite there as well. Moving on to the elevation drawings, these are the existing elevations first. You'll notice that the materials here are an exterior board and panel. It also contains asphalt shingle roofing and a wood garage door. And the brick along the, along the front here as well. This is the existing rear elevation. There you'll see the sunroom that's, that's to be removed where there's going to be a, I believe, the kitchen and dining areas be located. And then a chimney in the rear there is going to, is to be removed as well. This is the existing right-side elevation. And then the existing left-side elevation. And then moving on into the proposed elevations, this is the proposed front elevation. The first story, the, the board and batten that's existing there siding is to remain. And then on the second story, the, the main material is going to be stucco that, that will be painted to match the existing siding on the first story. The roofing material asphalt shingles will also, on the second story will also, also match the existing first story. And the trim will be painted Swiss coffee, which, which the garage doors will be painted that same color as well. And you'll notice that the existing brick on the first story, that's to remain as well. This is the proposed rear elevation. Then the proposed right-side elevation. And the proposed left-side elevation. And then this rendering just gives a better idea of the different materials being used and the different colors. And as you'll, you'll notice, the kind of existing colors in the first story will be, will be replicated in the way, in a way in the second story addition. In terms of neighbor response, a total of eight neighbor consultation forms were sent out to the adjacent neighbors. Of these, two of them were, were returned to staff in form of support. One neighbor returned the forum in the form of opposition to the projects and then five neighbors returned the forms. As I mentioned, there was neighbor opposition. The neighbors at nine seventy Stony, which is the adjacent right-side neighbor and the neighbor at nine five one Crestview, which is across the street. They both expressed concerns to staff regarding the new development. The neighbors mentioned the loss of view from the proposed second-story addition as a concern. The adjacent right-side neighbor at nine seventy Stony communicated to, to staff their concerns regarding the loss of view due to that proposed second story at nine eighty Crestview. Staff actually communicated with the neighbor via phone calls and email multiple times, but we are unable to obtain a photo depicting the existing views. Staff does note that there's an existing CMU wall in that shared property, a site yard property line between the opposing neighbor at nine seventy and then the project site at nine eighty Crestview. And these images just show the, the CMU wall at nine seventy Crestview. These are taken from the backyard at nine eighty. Sorry, nine seventy Stony. So I'm here around where my cursor is, is the CMU wall that we're referring to. Just a couple of different angles from, from, again, the backyard at nine eighty Crestview. The adjacent neighbor across the street at nine fifty, nine fifty-one Crestview also communicated to staff their concerns regarding loss of view due to the proposed second story at nine eighty Crestview. Staff received a photograph taken from the living room at nine fifty-one Crestview that showed the affected view. The applicant actually prepared a graphic that shows the proposed second-story addition superimposed onto the photograph. Staff evaluated the concern and the graphic that was prepared by the applicant and concluded that the majority of the existing views from nine five, nine fifty-one Crestview of the hills are to remain, even with the, with the, again, with the second story addition. So this is the original photograph taken from the living room at nine fifty-one Crestview. And then this was the graphic prepared by the applicant showing, showing the second-story addition superimposed on, onto the photograph. And staff also wants to note that the addition does not just meet the second-story setback, but exceeds them actually on both sides. It meets the front, front setback, which is ten feet from the exterior, exterior wall below. And then on the, on the left side, it exceeds it where the proposed second-story setback is fourteen feet and eleven inches and the right-side setback is seven feet and ten inches. So in terms of designer review permit findings, the following findings are required under section ten point oh five point two five zero zero of the Millbury Municipal Code in order for the Planning Commission to approve the requested design review permit. On number one, that the architectural landscaping and general appearance of the proposed building or structure and grounds are in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. Number two, that the project, project complies with all applicable development regulations. Number three, that the project will not cause a significant visual impact to neighboring views from principal rooms of a residence unless it is proven by the applicant that there is no other viable or cost-effective alternative. And number four, that the proposal is not detrimental to the orderly, harmonious, and safe development of the city and will not impair the desirability of investment or occupation in the neighborhood. Staff believes that these findings are met as detailed in the packet from, for tonight's meeting. And with that said, staff recommends that the Planning Commission consider adopting a resolution approving the design review permit to allow first-story renovation and addition and the construction of a new second story to an existing single-story residence in nine eighty Crestview subject to the attached conditions of approval. Staff is available, available for questions and the project applicant is, is available as well.
Thank you. Before the applicant, do we have any questions of staff from the commissioners? Okay, Commissioner Quigg. Oh, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Perhaps you can explain to us because there is an opposition at nine 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 Larkspur. However, there is no real explanation about that. Can you please explain that?
Sure. So we actually, the opposition form from nine 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 Larkspur, we actually did receive and I called the opposing neighbor back. And we communicated and she had mentioned that there was no actual opposition, but she, she did have some questions about, about, I believe, the existing landscaping in the rear and the trees and, and and all of that, which, which are to remain. Staff did try to communicate with the applicant a little bit closer to, to the meeting, but we, we were unable to.
Okay, thank you very much. I just wanted it on record. Thank you.
Commissioner Wong.
Thanks, Nestor, for that presentation. So a couple, two questions. One is, I noticed revisions to this drawing before it came to us. So if you could comment on any significant changes that the city had, that the architect took into consideration, especially regarding the neighborhood concerns, if they addressed those during these revisions. Secondly, there is a big, large easement. If you could talk a little bit about that, about what that easement is and how it affected the design. Actually, a third item is that just well, let's start with those two first.
Sure. So just real quick on the, in terms of the easement, I believe it's a public utility easement. And they also do have quite a bit of slope in the rear there, which limits their developable, developable area quite a bit. And in terms of the, the sort of different revisions that we went through with, with the applicant, the actual design of the house didn't go through too many, too many revisions. It was, it was more kind of different items such as, for example, they didn't, they weren't meeting the, the required front yard landscaping. So we had to change that a little bit. We did have them change a couple of things, of example, painting the garage door to match, to match with the trim. But in terms of, of, of the design of the house itself, there wasn't very much that was, that was changed from, from the initial supplemental to what you're seeing tonight.
Okay. And then the last question, hundred thousand dollar question is, it appears that there's no variance, no exception request. It all meets code.
That, that's correct. It meets high eight setback, F A R, floor area ratio, a lot of coverage. Yeah. And setbacks and everything. Yeah.
Oh, any other questions of staff? Okay, seems like none. So do we have the applicant available to speak? Oh, Commissioner Delengro.
So I, my question's, one is the proximity to the wires on the second floor. And I know it's right at the easement line. They have pushed it all the way to the edge of there. Is there a concern about the proximity in a high-wind area? The house is that close to those wires?
Honestly, that's, it's, it's probably a better question for, for some of our PG&E. From what, what, what we have discussed with them before, it's kind of the other understanding that as long as they don't directly build on it, that the distance is, and there's no real setback that's, that's required there.
Okay. And the last question I would have is the view to the property to the north on the left side of the property.
Yeah.
There is a window on the second floor on that side that appears to have full view of the entire backyard of that property. Was that discussed with the neighbors next door as to the location of that window and the, how much their backyard has clear view?
I, I, I do not believe so. At, at, at least not to staff's knowledge. That wasn't discussed. I know that at least from, and, and just to make this completely clear, you're, you're referring to the neighbor property at nine nine zero Crestview.
That's correct.
We didn't receive a, a neighbor notification form and, and opposition and we didn't receive any comments. I'm not sure if perhaps the applicant had some, some conversations with them. But, but not to staff's knowledge, no.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, if we can have the applicant, I believe, Mr. De Malanta.
Yes.
Please go ahead.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
We're very excited to meet with you. Obviously, it's a new time, so we're meeting on Zoom and I'm kind of used to seeing some of you face-to-face, but it, it has been a while since we submitted to the city of Millbury. I am a licensed architect with the state of California and a very happy resident myself of the city of Millbury. I met the couple of the home, nine eighty Crestview last year and we had a lot of discussions of the design of the home. And I think the few things to point out is this is a lifelong home that the applicant has lived in, grew up here, went to school in Mills High School and has left the nest, but now coming home to build an intergenerational or, and asked me to design a multi-generational home for them. They have two, two young kids and mom. And I'll let the applicant speak to that a little bit later, but I just wanted to kind of touch on some of the things that were talked about. And then I, and I will bring it back to the residents, the owners. The neighbor to the left that was recently asked about that we could, I guess, see the, the yard is the neighbor that actually supported the project. They've known them for a long time, great relationship, and they, they are the supporting letter. And we met with them and went through the, went through the design and the drawings. So just wanted to point that out. The neighbor that was also talked about earlier that's at the bottom in the rear, if I may, I'll share the screen. We, we did, just for the record, went on the roof. The owner, the homeowner went on the roof to show approximately what can be seen from there. This is the house that they're, you know, this is the neighbor that, that we were talking about. But this is the view of the very steep hill. And this is their front yard up front of their home. It's a, I guess the term is a flag lot where the, the street is just, the, the entrance from the street is just a driveway and it brings you all the way into the house. This would be the front door of their home. So very similar to a lot of the homes, obviously, when you're driving in a neighborhood. You know, we, we see the front doors of everyone's homes most of the time. And, and this is, this is the view with the foliage, which you know, right now it's no plans to, to change. Like I said, the applicant has two young kids and I don't think that there's time for them to, to change that right now. So and then other views of the foliage that creates depravity and the dense, the density of the, of the rear yard. So, and then I think, I'm sorry, I forgot what the other concern was, but just to kind of talk about how the design a little bit is kind of meant to be, which is the parents' the parents' current master bedroom is to remain for the owner's mom who will, who has stayed there for twenty-plus years and will get a very, just renovated, a very renovated room by staying in the location that she loved and, and always was very familiar with. And then the the owner will move to the second floor with the two kids, the two kids primarily being up there as well. So kind of letting you get inside of what was important for the design of the house. I think that's it for my portion and I'll save for questions, but I wanted to kind of introduce the applicant because they're very excited to obviously be in this position. They feel very fortunate to, you know, build on the house that they grew up in and they just wanted to express their thanks also. So.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Nathan. This is my wife Sarah and this is my mother. And just wanted to share a little bit about just me being here in the city and, and our house and actually just want to say thanks to Mark and his team as well as everyone on the planning committee for taking the time to listen to our proposal. So my parents, growing up, they had a small business and in the nineties, we were able to move to Millbury. And so I went to Mills High School starting in the ninth grade. I was, believe it or not, I had more hair and I was a homecoming prince. And I was on the varsity tennis team and our team made it to nationals, top sixteen. It was a really incredible high school experience in Millbury as well as opportunity to meet lifelong friends that I still have that are starting their own families and are setting roots down in Millbury as well. So it's really incredible to see this, these friendships last all this time. This house was also the perfect house for my parents. My mom, she still walks three miles every morning on Soria Camp Trail. My father's business was in Burlingame. But unfortunately, last year, he passed away unexpectedly. And so we had to talk about what can we do to help support my mother in addition to support our growing family. My second child, he was born in March earlier this year and so we had conversations with Mark. How can we create a home that's intergenerational, that still allows my mom to be in this place where she loves and is comfortable while, you know, raising a family? And like, how can we add on to this home that we all love so very much? And so my hope is that my boys Asher and Bennett will be able to have the same experiences that I did in Millbury by living here and hopefully they can have lifelong friends as well and also benefit from living with my mother, their grandmother, as well as my mother can benefit with living with us. And like, you know, it's, there's so many things I can learn, learn from living with family together, especially with three generations. And so every weekend we come to visit my mom and we take Asher to Meadows Elementary School to ride his bike. And so he's already familiar with the area. So hopefully, you know, if we can create this space for the whole family, I think it would, I think it would be good moving forward. So I just want to say thank you for your time again.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have any questions of the applicant from commissioners? Commissioner Wong.
Hi, questions for the architects? Couple things I want to point out and clarify. One is for the shadow study. Was that in response to neighboring concern or city concern about the shadow? Neighboring concern or city concern about the shadow? And if so, we believe that it's a neighboring concern. Um, I begin to clarify or point out uh what the findings were on the drawings that I had. It uh, I think the shading came out kind of. Unclear was to find a gradation that I couldn't tell what was going on there.
Um, the shadow study was included, just kind of an overkill. We didn't um. It wasn't requested by any of the neighbors. We we like to include it when we can. Um, you know, again, I'm I'm a resident of Millbrae. I I just try to anticipate in case there was. Any questions about it. That's why it was included. It was um kind of just to make a completeness for the package. But it was, there was no concern from anybody about shadows.
Okay, and then another second question is that, uh, you know, there are several neighbors that are concerned about their loss of. Um, view. Uh, we've seen this many times in some of the upper areas in Millbrae. Uh, some other architects have made tremendous concessions. Like we had one over at Vallejo Drive a few months ago, where they did significant changes. To their home in order to protect the uh view of neighboring homes. Uh, can you address any changes or uh design features that you did to help? Address those concerns?
Yes, absolutely. We're very uh aware of the neighbor, kind of, as you know, we're on a hill, the neighbor that's upper on the hill. If you notice on our design, we did not put any primary windows on the. What we call left and to the right of the home. Um, so that way, especially that neighbor on the upper portion, they. You know, they will not be looking into anyone's window and no one from the window will be looking out. There's a small. Peekaboo window from the um bathroom, but it's really just to kind of give a little bit of light and air. Um, um, for it, you know, um, at five feet high, which is that neck height. Um, and to really respect that privacy, um, as well as on the opposite side, again. Um, the the concern of people looking at the rear yard and whatnot, we. We purposely designed the homes to not have. Any primary windows. There's a little bit of window, obviously, just for circulation of 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 air, um, and a little bit of light, but. Um, it's very, very minimal. Um, so we we took that into consideration. The other is. We didn't, we didn't um go any higher on the first floor, if you notice. The first floor is eight feet high. Most people, I mean, to be honest, I kind of, we kind of consulted and. Uh, everyone wants higher ceilings, but we 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 took a modest approach and kept it eight feet. Um, the the second floor is nine feet, but again, that's a a little bit of modest of a new ceiling height. But we didn't add any uh height uh to the to the project that we needed to. The slope is uh three and four for the roof. And we, oh, sorry, uh, four and twelve um on the roof, uh, I'm sorry, three and twelve. On the roof and we studied the different heights from going four or or even more, which um some of the uh. Mirror projects you might notice um to keep the height minimal. And again, I I apologize. I think it's four and twelve to keep the existing. Uh, heights of uh in- existing slopes matching, but we didn't want to add any more than. Kind of what was needed for this new home. As you could tell, we couldn't go. You can't go to the back is we're we're right up against it, so the the only option is really up. Um, the second part that maybe, again, I don't really like to bring up to to these type of meetings, but the way we designed it. You know, again, this hu- uh family is a modest family. There's. Um, you know, they're 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 working family there. To build this house, they're earning the money to build it, so. If you really look into the detail of it is, we we did consult with the structure engineer to isolate. Where we're going to build on to the second floor, uh how we're going to build on the second floor. So we didn't sprawl it out, we contained it, so then that way we can make this. A feasible project that can be built as quickly as possible. Um, I know in Millbrae, that is kind of what I've heard the uh concern is to get the, keep the construction going. Do a good job, don't make it last longer than you need to. We anticipated all of that. When this is a full go. Their intention, obviously, time is, time is of an essence for them as well, and we would just build this house. Uh cleanly and swiftly.
Yeah, for uh myself on the planning commission, I'm all for updating houses and uh. You know, updating neighborhoods and hopefully we make compromises to address neighborhood concerns. Uh, I imagine we'll probably pick this up conversation a little bit later, but I'd like to hear. How big of a concern it is for the neighbors first.
Oh, uh, sorry, sorry to add, you know, um, I did meet with every single neighbor. They did, they didn't sign. The neighbors that didn't turn in, they didn't want to sign for reasons of their own, but um. I did meet with every single one uh on multiple occasions, so. Um, I did speak with that neighbor across the street. I went on his uh porch, took a picture of my uh, took a picture of myself. He expressed the same thing, um, but unfortunately. To tell another family, you know, to, there's no option to build back at all. It's the the opposite, the only way. So, um, but, you know, um, yeah, that that was the answer he didn't like, but we did meet with everybody.
Thank you. Um, any other commissioners? Any other questions?
So.
Commissioner Delengue?
Now, um, I know I asked about that window and the view over nine ninety. Did you explicitly have a conversation about the impact on their backyard and the privacy that they have?
Um, we, we, they know the neighbors. I mean, so they, it's a very easy conversation we have. So, you know, there, there's open communication. They supported the project. Um, there was. Uh, very clear, um, I guess, presentation of it. And uh they were happy. They were very happy. So again, this family is not new. They've been here twenty-two plus years. They do know all of these. Neighbors um that that we're talking about, so.
And I appreciate the expedience um conversation about the build. Uh, do you have anticipated duration of build for the project?
You know, we we've built here in Millbrae. We have active projects here in Millbrae, several, um. About half a dozen, so we we time it on on the rain. Right now, the way we're where we're at, we're lit, we're at this kind of sweet spot where we do like to start construction. Roughly in end of March, beginning of April. If, you know, again, at the end of this conversation, we're going to ask if you can approve the project, and if we got the approval today. Um, tonight, we we would be ready to submit uh in two weeks for the building department. What I would love to do, as you, as you can imagine, the whole construction industry that. Kind of flipped upside down and people were acting like, uh, I don't know. They're taking advantage of situations where we we've already kind of reached out to the contractors that have done work here in Millbrae. Um, can work expediently, but we might, we would rather time everything to start in the end of March. Maybe it's a not heavy rain season, we don't know, but we would start in March, wrap everything up by November. Before the next rain season, and then if there's still stuff on the inside, that'll be done during the winter, but. Again, they might get overexcited if I tell them that it'll be built within the year, but um that is our. Kind of our average uh time for this type of project is built within the year, so.
And are. The proximity to those rear wires, even the picture that you showed us, looking at the backyard, I mean, you're right at that wire height.
So we're we're at that wire height. That is also, um, you know, the consideration we had to when we we that we had when we were designing the space. Uh, with windows and and also um just placement of things. Unfortunately, you know, P G N E. Is P G N E and and we would ask them to make it tighter, but. Um, we'll see how that goes when we reach that, uh, you know, when we could develop more rapport with them as well, but. Um, again, this is a kind of a view that they're that they're used to, that they're they're kind of used to those wires. After living here for so long.
They understand that risk.
Yeah.
Any else? Any other question? Any other commissioners? Okay, we'll go ahead and open up for a public, uh, for the public to speak as well, so do we have any members of the public to speak?
Yes, we have one hand raised. Um, so Jeffrey, I'm allowing you to talk if you'll unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, yes, okay. Uh, my name is Jeffrey and um my dad lives across the street at nine five one Crestview Drive. So we expressed our concern was actually the view of the bay. Um, I s- I don't think we clarified that with uh Nestor. Um, so I saw the rendering at first, but uh it actually completely blocks the view of the bay. Um, the hill, we're actually fine with if you block the view of the hills, actually nothing, but um that was uh the concern of my father. And uh, yeah, I think that's it for now. Um, was there any other designs for maybe shifting it to the left more, so it doesn't block the view of the bay? Oh, for the architect.
Yeah, if you want to just go ahead and, if you want to go ahead and just finish your questions and then we can have the architect kind of come back at the end.
Um, so far, I think that's all I have right now.
Okay, so that was your main question. Thank you. Um, anybody else, where there, there were no other comments, right? Other members of the public wishing to speak?
Um, yes, there is one more hand. Okay, so, um, Andy, I'm allowing you to speak.
Hi, I. I have the phone open up for my dad. We are neighbors and he doesn't have a computer, so he's going to be doing the talking. Go ahead, Dad.
Um, Mr. Manicu, I'm one of the neighbors. Uh, Dumont Court. And I have a great concern regarding the addition of. Of the house. Uh, I bought the house a long time ago and uh. The reason I bought it is because of the view. And by adding a a top of the house, it would block my view completely. And and it's not temporary, but it's permanently. Therefore, I oppose the project. Thank you.
Thank you. And uh, Mr. Manicu, uh, you are at nine seventy, is that?
And that's addition, uh, all the homes. In the neighborhood, uh, there are single homes.
Single story.
Single story and uh. We we don't want to change the uh. The geography.
The look.
The look, yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you. And um, Mr. Medical, you're at nine.
I believe that's all.
Okay, and you're at nine seventy, Dumont, just to clarify. Or which which address are you at?
Dad, your address. He he is at forty Dumont Court.
Forty, oh, sorry, forty Dumont.
And I am actually at thirty Dumont Court.
Okay. Thank you. And did you want to add anything as well?
Uh, you know, as far as the look, a majority of the homes on Crestview Drive are a single story. And a lot of these additions that are going up, it does kind of make the neighborhood look out of place. Uh, it will block a portion of my view to the Millbrae Meadows, not necessarily the airport. Uh, so that's kind of my concern. We have an addition going up at Crestview Drive that's been abandoned. Uh, it looks like a haunted house ready for Halloween, so we have concerns about. I see you smiling. You 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 understand my concerns. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Um, so if we can have the architect um address, I believe, uh Jeffrey mentioned. Asking if there were any considerations about maybe trying to move it to the left. I'm not sure if that would address the other neighbor. Um, but if you'd like to go ahead and kind of answer, respond to those.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, absolutely. This is the view, just the picture that was taken. I guess what they're commenting on is the view to see the bay, which is. Here, um, obviously just taken on a really nice day. Respectfully, we're we're building our our second floor addition at the lowest possible. Um, height that we can, and the reason why it has to go to the left and to the right inside and not. Heavy on one side is because of the Millbrae Planning Code where we would step in and have a second floor. Um, second floor setback even within on the sec- separate setback, even tighter on the second floor. Um, the description would be like a wedding cake tearing to- towards the top. So that's, that's why it's towards the middle to answer that. Um, the other. Kind of comments of the neighbors. Our side is here, this, the, I believe the. The colors are kind of here. Oh, here, sorry, they're here. You know, I I to, I don't believe, you know, this. Distance is going to, um. You know, again, we're we're going up nine feet um for the second addition. We we are, we're not allowed, we're not able to go towards the rear. Um, the front is also kind of tight as well. Um, so we we did the best we could, but the views. The views are, you know, um unavoidable and, um, you know, we 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 tried our best, um, but. Um, I can't say that there's, there's a little bit of impact, but obviously, as you could tell. It's not, um, it's very minimal, I believe. You won't, you won't even see it from up this hill at all from uh. From existing, so this is existing home. If you were to drive down here, you you wouldn't even see our addition here. Um, I think that's all I have, but uh I'm open to expand more, um, if needed.
Okay, thank you. Um, do we have any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Sure, Joe, we have, we do have one more hand. I'm Walter Green.
Okay.
Hello?
Go ahead. Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, uh, I live at sixty Dumont Court and uh Andy's my neighbor and his dad's my neighbor. And the Jeffreys live at seventy Dumont Court and they're right next to me. And uh, the architect said he notified all the neighbors and that we didn't, nobody on the street got to talk to. Okay, that's the only thing I'm a little pissed about. As far as the view, yeah, we're directly up the hill from nine fifty-one, nine eighty is right in our line of sight. Blocking the airport and uh, I'm sorry, but I mean. My parents bought this house, I think fifty-five years ago for the view, and that's all my concerns.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And I think, do we have any other members wishing to speak?
There are no other hands raised.
Okay, and I I believe the architects already been talking about the views, so we'll, um, if okay with everybody, we'll go ahead and pu- close the public comment portion. This, okay, so let's go ahead and open up for commissioner comments and. However, possibly motion or whatever we'd like to start. Commissioner Quake, and you're muted.
Okay, um. The people that spoke on Dumont Court. Were not notified because I would think it's within so many feet that they're supposed to be notified. Uh, so, um, they would not have had to notify you, but I'm kind of. Wondering if. You know, I kind of wonder how much. I mean, you're.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Quake, um, Commissioner Wong, can you mute your? Or can somebody mute Commissioner Wong so that Commissioner Quake can talk? Thank you.
Yeah. Um, so I'm I'm kind of, it didn't come up and it didn't have to come up because of where they live. Um, and I'm asking this of staff. Uh, is it possible that their view is obstructed? I mean, according to the architect, um. It's a lot of feet away. I just.
Yeah, I I can, I can respond to that, Commissioner. Uh, so the. The properties on Dumont Court are approximately roughly two hundred and forty. Feet from the subject property. Um, the subject home under consideration tonight and uh just kind of looking at the. Uh, three D views, um, well, it looks like they're at a. Higher elevation than this property, so they're a little bit higher. It's unclear how how much higher maybe the architect. Has that information, maybe they have some um topography lines, um, they can kind of estimate what the that elevation is, but it is. It is considerably higher. I wouldn't say um a whole lot, but um it is, it's. We'd be interested to see what what type of views are are being um blocked, because given that the elevation differences, they're um maybe minimal.
Thank you.
Any others? Uh, Commissioner Wong.
Right, I'm also inclined to, uh, think that there's a compromise solution that hasn't been investigated. Um, the, uh, designer, architects, you know, he did address a lot of concerns such as privacy and meeting all the codes, which is great. Um, he did the rendering that shows the view from across the street, what the second story and the obstructed view of the bay would be. However, there was no concession, I believe, made to, uh, uh, the neighbors' concerns. He did say there was eight feet, uh, for the first floor, which is typical, but nine feet is a little bit high for the second story. I could see that, uh, the roof, uh, slope could be a lower pitch and maybe even be able to slope down towards the back with a like a more flat type roof. I know that they're trying to keep in character with the the neighborhood and the home. Uh, but given the neighborhood concerns, given we had precedents with Vallejo Drive, where the architect redesigned it to be more of a flat roof and in response to neighbors on Vallejo Court, which was very similar, a parallel street higher, just like, um, now this situation, I see that there might be more concessions or or design made to address neighbor concerns. Uh, beyond that, just one other comment, uh, I see in the note twelve on the very front page, new construction shall match existing. Every effort must be made to provide seamless, like-new space. No evidence of previous existing constructions shall be remained. I can see that, uh, few few design details, uh, could be, uh, more integrated to make it uh, more matching as a whole. The second story appears to be a stucco, um, exterior versus the, uh, wood clad exterior on the bottom floor, so it doesn't quite match. And then, uh, in the landscape drawing, more work can be done because there's an existing grass area, but then there's artificial turf on the new areas. So, uh, landscaping doesn't match. The second story and the first floor exterior don't match. I think a little bit more, you know, uh, design effort, the, uh, you know, the intricacies and the beauty is in details of the design, a little bit more to be made towards that and to address the neighbor concerns. So I'm intending to, uh, ask the architect to do a little bit more work on this.
Okay, any other commissioners? Any other commissioners? We do need to move forward, so Commissioner Quigg, you're muted again.
Um, the actual design of the house does not bother me at all. I I did notice that the top was stucco. But the colors all kind of blend, so that didn't bother me at all. I went up there and I and and then I saw the design and I I thought it was integrated extremely well. Um, the fact that they're using turf is probably a smart thing to do, at least just as long as it's installed correctly. There's more than one way to install those turfs and, um, sometimes the turf that's installed is installed over the cement or something and there it becomes imper- imperable, uh, rather than, uh, letting the water go down. So I would emphasize that. I I really don't have a problem with the design at all. I did notice that there was wood that it's in the back, uh, and I've seen a lot worse than that, trust me. Um, I I felt this was okay. Could could staff, um, show us that inter-imposed, um, second story?
Sure, I can share it.
And the other question is how, where was that picture taken from?
You you you're, uh, just to make sure, Commissioner Quigg, you're you're referring to this image?
Yes.
Yeah, so this is this is from the living room, um, from, uh, nine fifty-one Crestview across the street.
Okay, from where? I know it's the living room, but.
Oh, all right, so it's it's, I can show you on maybe a little map, it's a better view, but it's it's the room above the garage.
No, I I bet, you know, they took this picture, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
They sent it to you?
Yeah.
Um, it really kind of depends, um, the view, if, um, if they're standing at the window or if they're sitting down. Um, years ago, we used to be able to take a visual ourselves. Um, and that's gone away because sometimes the visual is very helpful. Um, I know the pitch could be changed. I don't think one foot is going to make it a difference one way or the other. Um, could I go back without the addition, without the addition?
That way, yeah.
Okay.
In a lobby in our discussion a little bit, there's a fourteen-foot setback on that second story on that left side, so it could be a fairly large movement of the second story shifted to the left, um, maybe even more, uh, setback or less setback than the ten-foot requirement, uh, if discussions with the city and through a request for variance, uh, possibly even about nine-foot shift to the left, that's an enormous difference. And, uh, yeah, for the stucco on the top, it's just a pet peeve of mine. I just don't like it when if I walk by a house and I see dissimilar materials, top and bottom, to me, it looks just like a, uh, add-on, which it is, but there could be more done to make it integrated as a whole to look like it was a complete house, unified house, rather than just an afterthought.
Commissioner Quigg, are you, did you want to continue?
Yeah. They would have to shift it all the way over, and I don't know if that would look good because it might be very lopsided then. That's my comments. Um, the roof could be lowered a little bit. Um, actually, you probably, if they're close to the window, I mean, the smog is there, so I really don't see any bay there at all. I guess you could probably see an airplane going up, but, um, anyway, those are my comments.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Dale Negro, I think you raised your hand.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, I did notice, obviously, um, in alignment with the, um, Commissioner Wong said is that the setback on left side um, is currently four foot eleven inches, um, you're actually greater than than the limit. Um, you could shift five feet to the left and be over the peak gable of the front left of the house and increase five foot of view on the right-hand side. I'm not sure how significant that is for the neighbor that's across the street, but it is five more feet of water view. Um, considering that, um, I did notice, obviously, also both side setbacks were greater than the limit. He kind of made it more narrow, which seemed to me like a concession of trying to limit the impact of you across the street. Uh, whether or not you shift it left or right, you still have a narrower than your allowable, um, which I do think is kind of a benefit to the neighbor across the street as a compromise already. Um, but I could see why a shift five foot to the left may be a tremendous positive for the neighbor behind you and still be within the required setbacks. Um, I also, um, last piece was on the flat roof on top. I agree that, you know, anything you can do to reduce the angle of the roof is a tremendous benefit to the neighborhood. However, obviously, to get back to the point of matching the style of the top floor and the bottom floor, you know, they can't be so dramatic as to have a flat pitch roof on the flo- on the top floor and a pitch roof on the bottom floor. That would look actually antithetical to the conversation here about having a similar style between top and bottom.
Did the, um, with the, I I know a few people mentioned the, uh, shifting it over, maybe with the architect or have you considered that or is that something that you and the, uh, owners might be able to consider? And you're muted, so.
Oh, hi, I I could show the elevation. Um, we did study that and, you know, obviously, we shifted over to the left, the neighbor, the other neighbor on the left is going to say, hey, you should move it to the right. I think we have a balance here is really my, you know, um, honest opinion. We did make a conservative effort to stay narrow, so thank you for for, uh, noticing that. Um, you know, I think if we say, okay, move it over to the left, I don't know if that's being fair to the other neighbor, um, because they would say, hey, you know, I I like it where it is. But even if we did want to move it over, I think you're going to see that it's going to sit kind of lopsided and what, you know, what we tried to do is just balance it out, really. I I'm not fond of introducing a flat roof when when this is a pitch roof myself, really, I I think. I think I understand the the comment about we can add the board and bat on the, um, front facade. I I I know the owners are here. We we did propose actually changing the colors of the homes and they they, you know, respectfully are nostalgic of the home that they had when their dad was here, you know, and and we're we're trying to add functionally. Um, the parents chose this color a while ago. If you look at the pictures, there's a little bit of memory, um, that the mom wanted to have with the home that she obviously had with her husband. Um, so just kind of give you a little bit of a background, you know, we we studied, we studied different colors and whatnot, and there was a very, um, very clear direction that we were not to, you know, that they were happy with the with the colors and things like that. And that's why you're you're not seeing a gray house or anything like that.
Um, I noticed somebody's drawing on the, I'm not sure if this is one of the staff.
Oh, that's me, sorry.
Oh, that's you, okay.
Sorry, I was just drawing that, uh, if we shifted it over, it's going to be lopsided. Um, you know, it's kind of centered right now, um, not not exactly centered, but.
Could you bring that up again?
Yes, 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 um. And I could I could take out our our writings, uh.
That's fine. I mean, so you're, the red is where if you were to shift it.
Yeah, if we're to shift it roughly, we're we're talking about here and then this would move over roughly about here. I don't know if that would be the, you know, the right profile, um, but we could study it, you know, again, I I don't know if that's exactly fair to the neighbor on the left who, you know, the other neighbor, um, you know, that that doesn't want it moved over. Um, so it's kind of kind of the point of view, right? Um, yeah, so I I feel like we, again, if we if we if we were to talk about protecting views, what I've heard on this council before is the people on the top win. No, you know, the higher you go, then no one at the bottom can do anything. And then, um, we're we're again, I just wanted to point out, asking for no variance, um, no exceptions, we followed everything in the guideline. We we worked very long on this to to meet the compromise of the neighborhood as a whole, not as in in individual, but as a whole, and ba- and give a balanced project. So when you did drive by this house, you won't think that maybe maybe you might look closely at the stucco and the board and bat, but I but I believe that it it would it would not make you, uh, keep your head turning for, uh, for any any more than just looking and and that'll be it. So, um, I wouldn't want this house, I think, to be too much of an oddball with a flat roof when everything is a pitch roof, so.
Okay.
There's a bit of, um, now seen upset for the, uh, you know, the second story addition. It's a little bit set recessed in the right side so that, you know, the flip flipping it to to that on the left side uh, might be a solution. Anyways, I think there might be more solutions to be investigated and then also even talk to the city about uh, if there can be a variance on that second story setback on the left side. Uh, the neighbor concern about, uh, that, I see you addressed their concerns because there's very small windows on that side of the building, so they'll they'll maintain their privacy. And they haven't expressed any concerns, whereas we have four, already four, uh, families, uh, with concerns about losing their view from the bay.
Um, can we have, uh, Commissioner Davis, please? Go ahead, and you're muted.
Hmm, um, the applicants have done everything that we ask of homeowners and the homeowners have a right to remodel their home. They've been mindful of the neighbors. The impact to the closest neighbors is higher elevation and over about two hundred and fifty feet away. I I can't be concerned with that because they're too far away and they're up higher. The design is beautiful and I'd like to move to approve the project.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the project. Do we have a second?
Yes.
We have a second, Commissioner Quigg, too.
Hi, and just for a couple of other comments, moving it down a foot isn't gonna help. Um, making a flat roof would not work. Actually, moving it over without a variance is not going to make a difference. Um, one one extra foot and and that's why, um, I'm gonna commit my, commit me for a second.
Okay, and, uh, before we vote, just to make a comment that, um, I think the architect was mentioning, it's it's difficult with the views, and I think that's something that, um, there is no set rule that every view has to be protected, but we do try to also balance because, you know, uh, try to balance all the rights of the homeowners because homeowners have a right to do what they want to do with their property, but at the same time, it could impact the neighborhood. That's why we have the planning commission and and planning rules and, um, and guidelines. And so, uh, I would say I agree that i- if there were a way to move back, that might have been an option, but there is the public utilities man in back, so there's some flexibility there. And, uh, it does seem that trying to shift it a little bit this way or that way is not going to do that much of a significant make as significant of an impact, lowering the ceiling by, you know, a foot, trying to change the roof, doing all of that, it just seems like it's going to be difficult to do. So, um, I think that having said, so those are my comments on that. So we do have a motion and a second, but do we have any other? And I don't have a problem with the stucco above the siding. I've seen plenty of that and it doesn't, as long as it's the same color, I don't think that it looks drastically different. So I I I don't have an issue with that personally. Um, did we, um, have any other comments before we call for the vote? I think Commissioner Del Negro.
Uh, I would say I'd just be more enthusiastic if it was shifted over to the left five feet. Even that benefit of view to the bay for that, uh, neighbor across the street would be beneficial.
Okay, any other? Hey, call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Del Negro?
Yay.
Commissioner Wong?
Nate.
Commissioner Quigg?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
And Chair Joe?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero by a voice vote with Commissioner Wong dissenting.
I believe that's four one.
Oh, so four one, sorry.
Yes, and then, um, and then just to know that there is a ten-day appeal period, so, um, you'd need to wait for that and then hopefully, uh, for the city. Um, so congratulation on that and hopefully, if that goes well, hope the neighbors will end up being happy in the end. Um, I've been on, being on the planning commission, I can't remember how many years now I've been on, and this is the hardest part, sometimes is the trying to deal with balancing, um, the neighbors and and I've seen some things where it doesn't get as bad as it feels like it will be in the end. Um, and I I've seen others where I didn't expect it to be as intrusive, so I'm hoping that this will be a a good one that does not impact the neighbors too much. Um, okay, so we'll go ahead and move on to item five, new business, and there is actually none here. And then we'll move on to, so we'll go ahead and move on to item six, staff updates. So this is an update on submitted planning applications and future planning commission meeting.
Yes, um, thank you, Chair Joe. Um, Rosco Mado Planning Manager. Uh, next planning commission meeting, we will, uh, is scheduled for September twenty and we'll be reviewing the active transportation plan. Um, this is an important milestone for the city. As you know, we have spun off the transportation, active transportation plan from the general plan, um, to get that going, um, to get, uh, that approved, uh, in advance of the general plan update. Uh, we did have a um, uh, open house regarding the ATP, uh, last week on, uh, Wednesday, so a week from today. And we had about, uh, approximately thirteen to, I believe, eighteen, uh, community members that participated. We got some input there. Um, in addition, we're into the BPAC committee for, um, subcommittee. In addition, we're into the BPAC committee for subcommittee to get input, so you'll be seeing that in a couple of weeks here. Kind of projecting a little bit further out into October, we will, we're anticipating having at least one meeting, possibly two single family homes and that, that's still a little bit tentative, but we should anticipate at least one or two, one, at least one meeting in October. Further out, kind of, on the advanced planning track, we are continue to do a lot of progress on the specific plan. And we'll, we're, we're looking at the possible dates for a joint study session to the planning commission and city council on the specific plan. And other, other items for a joint study session include the general plan and objective standards, so that, those two will be further into, or likely early next year. Probably around January, February, so, you know, so be good input for, is a good opportunity to get input from you and the planning commission on these very important aspects of our general plan update. Furthermore, next week is the APA conference, so we have registered each one of the planning commissioners and we if you have any problems registering or accessing the, the meetings, feel free to let Christie know, but those days are Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. So this is a virtual meeting, so it, it's, it's gonna be new for everybody, we haven't participated in, in a PP conference virtually before. But there's a lot of good sessions and hopefully you'll find it very beneficial as well.
Think I received, did everybody receive that information for that conference? The APA conference next week?
It would have been emailed to your city email, I believe, so if you haven't received anything, just contact me and I'll get you.
I think it would be good to prompt us to check our.
Definitely, I'll put an email together for you as well.
That would be great, thank you. And is our next meeting in person or we, we're not, right? Okay.
That's correct, yes, we're still virtual for the foreseeable future. Or, or almost a month to month basis and we'll, we'll, we're anticipating being virtual in October, possibly even November and maybe, maybe December as well, so I would, I would prepare for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but yeah, anything could change and we, we were anticipating being in person at this time, but, you know, things, things change, but as of right now.
Just wanted to clarify, cause that was in the minutes that we were gonna have our meeting in person.
Yeah, things change so fast. But as of right now, the next, I, I think the, when we do go back into in-person meetings, the plant, city council will be the first to go in person, so once they go in person, then the next planning commission meeting will be in person as well. And we'll, we'll definitely let you know if, if plans change, you know, prepare accordingly. Regarding new projects, we did receive one new project, second story addition at Eight Dexter. And we still have a few out there that, that we're anticipating probably will submit in the next few weeks. Just a single story or, I'm sorry, second story for single family homes or duplexes, but in terms of larger projects, we're still continuing to work through life science projects as well as some of the larger multifamily projects. We don't, we will be receiving a new application for mixed use development in the MSASP, so it's one of the seven doors properties next to Millbury Sarah Station. Probably within the next few weeks, that project is an SP thirty-five project, which get into more detail a little bit in a future meeting, but in, in essence, that project is providing certain amount of affordable housing for the city and has certain requirements in order to meet a street, sequel streamlining acts because it's providing a certain amount of affordability in, in the city. In, in, in the cities. The cities, depending on the city's track and, and how they're providing, how many units we've provided so far. So anyway, so we'll, we'll see that in the next few weeks. And I think that does it for staff updates, I'm not sure if you guys have any questions for me.
Commissioner Wong.
A question for Roscoe, so going back to these large residential developments along Al Camino and Broadway. You know, there's need for housing and that we're trying to provide accommodations for developers such as TOD projects. However, for the zoning regulations in the zoning maps and the general plan as it exists now and in the future, will these residential developments, are they allowed to be zoned only for a residential development, high density residential development? Or do they require them with our zoning map to have mixed use, including commercial as part of this? Cause I have concerns about the changing character of those neighborhoods, the Al Camino, Broadway. If there is developments, large high density developments, they don't have only residential developments, we may lose the character, a lot of commercial opportunities and have mixed use.
So for a lot of the properties on Al Camino Real, majority, almost all of them are, are zoned commercial. And in the commercial zoning district, multifamily is allowed with a conditional use permit. So it, it doesn't specifically require residential, or does it prohibit it, but it does allow it with a COP. And so that, those, that's where we see the majority of the, however, in the MSASP, there are certain zones which allow it by, as a permitted use. When we're, I'm sorry, so just before I forget, the specific plan will have a slightly different approach to land uses. And when we get to that point, you'll, you'll be able to see what the different land uses and permitted uses in, in different areas of the city.
Right, so I'm very concerned about like our downtown, which is like.
We're not really doing discussion right now, so it, it's just information from the staff, so I think let's try to keep it to that, please. Did you have any other questions though? Or Commissioner Quick, we'll go to Commissioner Quick and then if you do, we'll come back to you. You're muted again.
And I forget, anyway, um, my question is several weeks ago, several months ago, you brought up that new part of the website for planning, where if somebody wanted to go in, check on a project, you could do so. Can you review how we do that again?
Sure, are you referring to?
I know we go to the city website, but after that.
Sure, yeah, absolutely, are you referring to the active development projects webpages or, sure, I, I can I can do a share screen and then show you how to navigate to that.
Find it last time and I thought it was wonderful, but I thought maybe you'd give me a shortcut or something.
Yeah, absolutely, why don't I?
You wanna send it to me tomorrow?
I, I could share the link, how about I share the link with all the commissioners?
That'd be great.
I can email that out.
Oh, that'd be great, like I say, it, it, it's fantastic, but it took me a while to get there after said it, it was available.
Roscoe?
Yes.
It was a good idea to share your screen, because anybody who watches this later can navigate them by themselves, cause they're not gonna get the email with the link. So it's good news for the public too.
She's gonna send it via to email addresses, so it'll be a good practice.
Okay.
We'll email it to you, but.
All right. Okay, so you should be seeing, I, what I did here is I went to Google and it just typed in City of Millbrae. And click on the main page. Sorry, it takes a little while, and then we can go to departments and then planning, so over here is this community development building and then planning division, so you wanna click on planning division. And then it takes you to this main page, so the link that you wanna click on is here, active development projects, so it's under planning, it's the second one, just under staff availability. And so this is, this is probably what you're referring to, it takes a little while to load here. Does, it does take a lot of space, but.
Maybe scroll down, just keep scrolling down.
Yes, these, these are the individual projects here that we have under review. This is under preliminary review, this is the project I was referencing before. So these are all the applications that we have in, and then if I scroll back up here, under categories, there's, it's broken up into major development projects and then single family projects for planning commission review, so. Under major development projects, and I apologize, this, this screen should show a map here of the city. Perhaps if I so if you just select major development projects, this will just filter out the single family and show you the larger projects. Here, some of these are currently under review, some of them are approved, like Gateway Station, this is under review. Sarah Station has been approved, Moxie Hotel has been approved, so these are the larger projects and yeah, let's see, so that's, and then similarly, if you go to single family projects, it's also kind of you can see what you have seen already and what you will see in the future. Some of these designs may go through some revisions, so these might not be the most recent versions, or these might not be the ones that you will eventually see. But, but these are the current designs that we, that we have, so, so that's
Thank you.
Alternatively, you can also just Google active development projects Millbrae and then that should take you to the page directly.
Thank you, and then Commissioner Wong, did you have another question, staff?
So for these applications, when these high density residential developments, Al Camino, Broadway, apply for their conditional use permits, are those presented to the planning commission here during the early planning phase, I wanna make sure that check to see if they're, have their approvals before they get too far along in design, because just to make sure they're consistent with general plan.
For the large, large projects, we if, if there's certain if, if there's a concern with regards to the project, we would consider bringing to a planning commission in advance, otherwise, if it's been fully vetted by staff and we believe that it meets all the requirements, and I think then we would just schedule it for the planning commission hearing to, for, for a decision. We have been doing that on several projects, we're kind of working with the applicants. In addition to just staff review, we have consultants who is able to provide consultation services in architecture and, and provide us with guidance in that respect as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, any other commissioners?
Sure, Joe, I, I want to just share the screen one more time so that I can show the commission of what, what the map looks like, it didn't load last time, but I was able to get it to load, so here's the a single family project, these pins are the locations of the different projects, it's a click on pins, show you the address and what, a little image here of what that design looks like. So you can click on each of these pins and it can tell you the address and what the home is, so. So this is a single family, kind of a lot over here around East Millbrae Avenue on the south side of town. And then also, if you go to major development projects, you'll see the red pins and naturally, they're all clustered around Al Camino and the Millbury station area is specific plan.
Great website. Of course, people to go on it and you check it out. Okay, so we'll, that's it for staff updates, do we have any announcements from the commissioners? Commissioner Davis.
Just noticed that our old Office Depot building is going to have a Spirit Halloween store in it soon, I know, I don't think they're open yet, but ought to be any day and just wanna remind people, we have another opportunity to shop in Millbrae, so get all your Halloween gear there. Don't know what we're doing for Halloween for COVID, but there might be something you need, make sure you buy it there, stay local when you can, that's it.
What, one other thing, Chair Joe, if I, if I may, just provide a staff update, and I'm not sure if community development director provided this update in the previous meeting, but the Lucid Motors has, is, is a temporary occupancy, so they're, they're actually already built and, and ready to go, so. That's on the, on the south side of Adrian Road across from the issue to the plaza with In-N-Out.
It looks very nice.
We're excited, so.
Any other, I think Commissioner Quick, you have for announcements?
I was gonna ask one more question, but I, is there anything new on high speed rail or is that even anything that you can help us with? Update, I think yesterday was the comment period or something.
Nothing, nothing that I'm aware of, the last was the, the Millbrae community meeting that they posted on the design variant.
And I missed that one, yeah.
Anyone else?
Kathy, don't you have an announcement about man, woman and student of the year?
Yes, I did, oh my brain, too many meetings.
That's what I thought you were, okay.
Yeah, I just wanna announce that the man and woman and student of the year event is happening. And it will be, be on October the fifteenth, the Friday night at Green Hills. The man of the year this year is Robert G. Godchok. The woman of the year is Marion Kong. And the student of the year is Sophia Baltazar. And her mom is very active with a lot of the organizations and Sophia has helped painting the holiday stars that go on the Christmas tree, so they're all very well deserving people, so put it on your calendar or at least tell people it's happening, so thank you.
Thank you, I think Commissioner Wong, you have your.
Yeah, just, thank you and congratulations to the city staff. The Millbury Art and Wine Festival was held last weekend, Labor Day, amazing turnout. A lot of people, maybe half as many booths and have as many people as usual, but that means there's still a lot of people out there, so it was great to see our community getting back together safely. We'll have another street fair event, September eighteenth, Saturday for mid autumn festival hosted by the Millbury Cultural Committee.
On the calendar.
Anything else? Okay, and we're gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting for tonight, thank you everybody, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, bye bye.